Good evening, everyone. Welcome to one of the evening meetings of the Kent County Board of Commissioners. Thank you all for being here. Before I call to order, I'm going to make one note on the agenda. A slight shift in items five, five A and five B will be switched around. So we will start with the presentation from Steve Curry, and then we'll move to the public hearing. With that, Madam Clerk, will you please take the oath?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Woodin.
Here.
Womack.
Here.
Teal.
Here.
Sparks.
Present.
Skaggs.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Morgan. McLeod.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Burrow.
Here.
Bolkowski. Vice Chair Breavy.
Here.
Commissioners Volter. Antor.
Here.
Chair Stuck.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 15 members present, four absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I'll just note that Commissioner Morgan is not here. He promised he would get the airport tower approved before the end of the evening, so we'll see. With that, Commissioner Sparks, I'll turn to you for the invocation.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. Life is precious. The gentleman that I requested and offered and expected to be here today to give us the prayers died yesterday unexpectedly, yesterday morning at the age of 63. He was Bishop Dennis McMurray of Renaissance Church of God in Christ. He was my mentor, my cousin, and my friend. He touched the lives of so many people and left an impression of wisdom, hope, and love for God everywhere that he went. So my invocation is more in his honor, if you don't mind. It's based on the words of wisdom that he offered to me. About every 60 days, he would call me and he'd ask me what was my temperature, which meant, how was I doing? I distinctly remember a time about two years ago that I started complaining about something that I felt needed to be changed, and immediately, he cut me off. My feelings were hurt for a very brief moment, but I knew that he loved me and only wanted the best for me. Cousin Dennis said to me, "I understand your pain, but complaining is what humans do. You're not simply human. Remember, you're a child of God." In that moment, I knew that he was providing me wisdom to use the power of prayer and personal reflection. And yep, he challenged me to a prayer. "Lord, reform thy world, beginning with me." Thank you. [applause] I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you for those words, Commissioner Sparks. All right, let's move to the special order of business, and our first item is Steve Curry from Michigan Association of Counties. Good evening, Steve. Good to have you here.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. As we work through this, you guys have a copy of the presentation in front of you there. My name is Steve Curry. I'm the Executive Director of the Michigan Association of Counties. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you folks. I try to make it to about half the county board meetings every year, so that's about 40 different county commission board meetings. We definitely look at our role. There we go. We look at our role as a team effort. While we're your voice in Lansing, we look for you folks to help be our voice in the district when we're working on issues, and you guys do a great job of that and has made have make make us so as effective as we are today. So I'm going to run through these slides and leave some time at the end for some questions. So first off, of course, this is the leader, this is how MAC is made up. We have 16 county commissioners from across the state. You can see how our regions are broken down. There's two from each region, three at large seats. The board meets at least four times a year. We meet at each of our conferences, so we do a spring conference called our Legislative Conference. That conference is always in Lansing, and then we do an annual, whoops, an annual conference, which is rotates around the state. This past year, it was in Port Huron. Next year, it's in Kalamazoo, and now we're working on negotiating a contract for 2024. And then we have elections for a board that are held at the annual conference typically, which is, like I mentioned, in the fall. This is your current MAC leadership team. I think you guys know the guy in the upper left-hand corner, current MAC president, Stan Ponstein, then Eileen Coall is our first vice president. She's from Ottawa County, and then Jim Story, second vice president from Allegan County. So what is the purpose of MAC? Of course, first and foremost, we're known for our advocacy both at the state and federal level. We partner with the National Association of Counties at the federal level, but we do most our advocacy here in Lansing, or not here in Lansing, in Lansing, and as I mentioned before, with the help of you folks back in your districts. We provide various educational opportunities in addition to our conferences. We do a one-day training session in the summer for just kind of quick hit issues that we want folks to know about. We also, in cooperation with MSU Extension, do the new county commissioner school, which will be this fall. Registration is open for those sessions, so I would encourage your folks or some of your newer commissioners to attend that. And also, if you can attend, it's helpful because we do lean on some more seasoned commissioners to kind of help with those newer commissioners when they have questions and things like that. We also provide various services through our association, which you can see listed there. So getting into some legislative issues, I'm going to highlight some of the budgetary items, want you folks to know about, some issues that we'll be focusing on in the lame duck session this fall, and then kind of close things out with some general policy information that we're looking at. So of course, first and foremost, county revenue sharing is something we work on every spring with the legislature. As you know, we only get statutory revenue sharing. Where cities, villages, and townships get constitutional revenue sharing. This year, we were able to get a 6% increase in county revenue sharing. That's the highest since I've been at MAC to see, so we were very excited to see that. Some of the other budgetary issues we worked on was a $4 million increase for Raise the Age Fund that was moving 17-year-olds out of the adult system into the juvenile system. Of course, part of that deal back when that was made was that the state was going to pay for any costs that were occurred from that, so that's to keep up with some of those costs. I'm not going to go through all these, but there was $150 million for a single statewide judiciary case management system. I'll talk a little bit about the trial court funding commission, some of those recommendations, but that kind of came out of that that work group. These are some more of the budgetary items. $15 million for secondary road patrol. Incidentally, there's been a change in how secondary road patrol is going to be funded going forward because of the uncertainty with with how that was funded in the past. And you can kind of see some of those other grants and things like that that were in the budget that we helped work on. So looking at this, this is kind of our 2022 priority list. We'll be making a new list here after the election and to work on for the next legislative session, and I'll talk a little bit about some of these going forward here. So revising the Open Meetings Act, I know for a lot of counties, talking about the second bullet point first, they would like to get back to pre-COVID stage where folks could participate remotely if they had if they needed to. When you get into some weather issues, like in the UP, travel issues, things like that, unfortunately, I don't think that's going to happen this year with the legislature the way it is now. It is something that we've been talking to the policy staff about. It is something they're going to look at next year, but they are going to be working on kind of simplifying the process, simplifying the Open Meetings Act and make it less confusing. And you can kind of see that on bullet point one, some of the changes there. We have been working with Representative Calley from Ione County on the bill and providing her some feedback on the bill, but we do expect movement on that bill this fall. Wanted to highlight one of the victories this fall was ensuring proper funding for local courts. So part of the trial court funding commission's recommendations was looking how the court system was funded. In that, right now, courts, the court system is funded by the fees they charge those court attendees. Probably not the best way. So the trial court funding commission made a recommendation to look at how courts are funded and redo that. Unfortunately, that report came out right before COVID. They were started to work on those changes. COVID hit, you know, obviously, things slowed down, so there was a sunset put on this legislation, and it was due to sunset October 1st of this year. We were able to get extension on the sunset till 2024 to ensure that courts are still funded so that the counties would not have to pay for those courts. Had that sunset expired with no legislative fix, it would have cost about $50 million statewide for counties to pay for those courts. So they were going to continue next legislative session. Sarah Lightner, former county commissioner out of Jackson County, will probably spearhead that. She's done it in the past, but again, trying to look at a more equitable way to fund the court system going forward. Protecting and improving Michigan's local public system from mental health. This this gets at the the mental health changes that are being looked at in the legislature. I'm sure you all are well-versed on this. There's two packages of bills, one in the House, one in the Senate. You know, with it being a lame duck session, you have a Senate Majority Leader who has one package of bills, and now an Approach Chair in the House who has a set of bills. So we're trying to stay as close to it as we possibly can. We, of course, support our CMHs out there and want to keep things local, keep the decision-making local. I'm sure Stan can tell you, when you bring up this issue around the MAC Board of Directors, it's probably the hottest topic, and everyone is kind of on the same page there. You know, we want to keep things local. Let's let's increase the funding to the local levels so that those those issues can be met locally, not outsource it to a private entity. So we'll be continuing to work with the CMHs on that issue and keep you informed as if there are any changes. Creating a fair revenue sharing system for counties. So this is kind of a new concept. We've talked about it for a while. We've got bills introduced. It would essentially take revenue sharing and put it into a virtual lockbox so the legislature wouldn't be able to appropriate it out as easily each legislative session. The bills that we are actively working on are the ones in the Senate sponsored by Senator Schmidt. It would create a revenue sharing trust fund, and actually, it would increase the dollar figure that would go into that trust fund to about $350 million, which is about 120 more million than we have now. Where did we come up with that number? If you look back in 2001, when counties came off of the state revenue sharing, we were getting about 3.6% of the sales tax. If you take that 3.6% now and apply it to sales tax now, that's where we get the 350 million from. So it wasn't just a number we made up. We feel like that was a good time to, really equitable time to talk about how counties are funded. We have been speaking with the Senate on this to get legislative hearing. We're expecting possibly to get a hearing at the end of November on that, so stay tuned on that. But this will be something we're working really hard on this fall. Veterans' property tax exemption. Again, many of you know about this issue. We do think we have a way to kind of make up for that loss statewide. This is probably about $30, $40 million hit to county budgets. What this would do was basically have no change to the veteran on getting the money back to the counties. There would be a refundable income tax credit is how it would refund counties. So the state would be paying essentially for this this veteran property tax exemption. The bills are 783 and 1084. Senator Bumstead is the sponsor of those bills. This is probably a 50/50 if we can get this done this year, but something definitely we'll be looking at next year. PPT exemption. So if you remember the end of 2021, when the legislature and governor made that big deal on the, on a big, I think it was a supplemental budget, there was about, they increased the PPT exemption, which cost counties about $75 million a year. I keep talking about money because, of course, that's what we mostly deal with. There was no fix for that $75 million cut, so there has been a bill introduced, 1060 to 1062, that has passed the House that would make up for that $75 million cut that would go from the from the state to the locals on that. It was approved unanimously unanimously in the Senate, and now it sits on the House Committee waiting for a vote. So please stay tuned on that as we send out more updates. Some other victories we want to highlight, of course, four-year county commissioner terms, something that's been worked on at MAC since I've been there. We appreciate the help on getting that done. That'll go into effect in the 2024 election. Secured funding for 911. So this was a increased funding so that 911 services can be brought up to the scale that technology allows at this point, allowed for EMS to properly, you know, get to find people when they need need the help. It was an increased surcharge on the prepaid surcharge from 5% to 6%, which is interesting about this legislation, that it does provide a rollback if there's excess funds needed so that there's not an excess or surplus funds needed, so to roll back any of those fees. And then finally, I think this is the final legislative piece, Freedom of Information Act changes. You can kind of see the bill package there. A lot of changes listed there. I'll let you read through it. We, there's no scheduled House vote on it yet, but there are some things that could, we're working with the bill sponsor to get changed because it could cost counties a lot of money for for simple mistakes, things like that. So I don't know if we'll see movement on that, but we wanted to make sure you were aware of it. These are our MAC policy committees. You can see when they meet, many of you folks have participated in our policy committees or do participate in our policy committees. You don't have to be in person to participate. We had the Zoom and go-to-meeting function long before it became trend, so if you'd like to participate, you can see where you can fill out the application there on our website. MAC PAC, some of you participate with our MAC PAC. We use that to support former county commissioners in the legislature. Right now, there's 28. We're usually about 30 former county commissioners in the legislature, and we like to support those folks and other folks in leadership in key committee committee positions that support MAC. This is your MAC Government Affairs Team. Deana Bosworth is our Government Affairs Director. She's been there probably about 11 or 12 years, and we recently hired Madeline Feta and Samantha Gibson on our staff. They've been with our staff for about two months now. Madeline handles transportation, general government, and environmental issues, and Samantha handles health and human services and judiciary issues. I talked about our conferences. Our next conference is our Legislative Conference, the end of April in Lansing, and then our annual conference will be the first week of October in Kalamazoo. These are our communication tools, Facebook, Twitter. We do a podcast, Instagram. Hopefully, you're getting our weekly legislative updates. We go, we've gone back to an in-print newsletter that comes out every other month that has a lot of great information and just trying to get as much information, you folks, as we possibly can without being too overwhelming. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Steve, for that. Any comments or questions from commissioners? Commissioner Woodin.
Hi. I don't know if I should be concerned or maybe even a little bit thankful that you get startled. Will I raise my hand? Chair Stuck?
Won't happen again, I'm sorry.
Thanks very much for the presentation. I wanted to ask a little bit about two of the pieces of legislation that you've talked about, the first one being the Open Meetings Act. Is there, would there still be a requirement that if there are some members meeting virtually with written notice, that at least a quorum is needed for in-person?
Right. Right now, as it is, you can't vote remotely. You can participate, but you can't vote.
Correct.
So what we're looking to do is give it, is allow remote voting. Yes, part of that requirement would be, if you look at the package of bills now, would be that written notice would have to go to the board beforehand. The board could approve or disapprove that. You would need an in-person present quorum, and you could only do it a certain number of times a year. I think we're kind of some of the guidelines we had put on it.
Yeah, that makes a great deal of sense. You know, I just, while I certainly think many of us saw, other than the safety value of our virtual meetings during the pandemic, now that that emergency is not present or at least a constant presence in our lives, having, you know, ensuring that the majority of our business is being done in person makes a great deal of sense. And then the other question was regarding the revenue sharing provision. I think this makes a great deal of sense. My question was, since the sales tax goes to a number of things, including statutory revenue sharing, the school aid fund, others, if we're setting a carve-out for ourselves, what would that potentially be coming at the expense of? I'm assuming not the school aid fund because that's enshrined in in Proposal A, but what other parts? If we're, if we're trying to ask for a larger piece of the pie, who's getting a smaller one if we if we succeed?
You know, that's not up for us to determine. We would just get a portion of that that sales tax. So it would still technically need to be appropriated by the legislature, but this would set that dollar figure in there, and they would have to take action to reduce it.
Gotcha.
Excuse me. So, you know, there's a lot of different things that the sales tax go to goes to, like you said. So for me to be able to say specifically where it would, in fact, I can't really tell you. But what we look at it as is a more reflective tone of how the economy is doing. If you look at our two primary funding mechanisms now, you have property taxes and revenue sharing, right? Right now, the legislature has given 1%, 1%, 1%. This would actively reflect how the economy is doing. So it's 3.6% of the sales tax. So if the sales tax goes down, the number does go down as well. So that's the way we're looking at it, is something a little more secure and reflective of the economy.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon. I just wonder, could you go back to the FOIA presentation? Now, I just wondered if you could drill down on that a little bit more and just try to give me a sense of what you're working on exactly in that regard?
Well, this bill's been introduced by Representative Steve Johnson, and what we're trying to do is some of the, some of the changes that he's looking at, we feel like are a little, they go a little too far as far as the Freedom of Information Act goes. Some of the penalties are very significant when mistakes are made and maybe not intentional. So we're trying to kind of soften it a little bit. We understand where the the change needs to be made, and this still doesn't get it, you know, you know, how the legislature's handled it, the governor's handled either. You know, we're kind of set at different standards at different levels. So that's kind of in a general sense where it is. I don't think we'll see much movement on this, if any, this fall, but, and I'm not that tuned into these set of bills just because we haven't seen much movement on it, but that's kind of the general sense is to kind of...
I was just wondering if he's coming out a little bit harder just because of, you know, a lot of things I hear about FOIA requests, sometimes that the government agencies being really unreasonable and the costs are astronomical compared to what they're asking for. It's like they're almost getting away with something because it's not sanctioned or it's not, there's no real policy behind it. It's just whatever we want to charge. And that's, I hear that quite a bit. I also hear cases that go through really easily and everybody's happy.
Right, right.
So I'm wondering, are we working to make it potentially easier for the taxpayers, constituents? Are we going to make it easier for the county, not this county, but government agencies to keep information away from people?
No, I don't think our intent is to be any sort of an obstacle in it at all. No, by by any means, not that. But I think we want to keep any sort of penalties and things like that fair, not, you know, especially when maybe it's, if a mistake is made, you're looking at, you know, criminal charges or things like that.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I just, and I also think on the flip side, the the cost of these requests needs to be fair and reasonable. Sometimes they're they're just not, so thank you.
Yep.
All right. Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have a question. I just want to express my thanks for your continued advocacy on the mental health issues as a member of our local CMH board. You know, obviously, we've been very concerned about the proposed changes, and the fact that you've been there and keep advocating for local control just really means a lot. So thank you very much for that.
Welcome. Yeah, it's 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 an easy one. At our association, everyone seems to be on the same page on it, so thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for being here, Mr. Curry. I find great value in MAC, especially having the new commissioner school. So I tell every new commissioner, you have to attend that school because there's a lot of value there. So thank you for offering that. I also appreciate your advocacy for the four-year terms, about time, but thank you very much for that. I know you fought very hard for that for on our behalf. And I also appreciate the networking opportunities and hope that we can bring the regional, the bimonthly regional meetings back. I know we couldn't because of COVID, but I felt the networking opportunities were very valuable as well. And also, while we're doing our conferences, which I also learn a lot at, it would be nice to have one in Grand Rapids. We have a beautiful place here, so.
We've, we've been, we pushed Amway and JW to kind of respond to RFPs. They haven't done it yet, so if you know anyone over there, when we send it out, we'll let you know, and you guys can kind of make some calls, yeah. But we would love to come here, and it's, you got a hotel, I think that's big enough for us, and that's the hardest thing, is our conferences have grown to the point where it's tough to find a hotel that can house us, so.
All right. Anyone else? If not, so while I have you, eye to eye, couple of questions. Let me go back to the OMA. Has the, has MAC taken a position on the Attorney General's direction that the ADA would overs, would preempt the Open Meetings Act and require public bodies to grant remote participation?
No, I have not seen that opinion yet, so I can't, we have not taken a position on that.
I think it was issued in February.
Spring.
In February of this year.
Okay. Yeah, it hasn't been discussed in our committee or anything yet, so I'll try to look that up when I get back and see what I can find.
Okay, good. And then the other one is going back to the to the ongoing debate with respect to where we go with community mental health. If that comes out in the lame duck session, we won't have a lot of time. Are you on the edge of the seat, ready to pounce if something comes out of either the Senate or the House? It's either going to come from Senator Shirkey or Representative Wipring.
Yeah, we we are. I mean, it's it's one of the top issues for us this fall, if not the top one, and it's, you know, we are consistently hearing rumblings that a deal's being made, a deal's being made, and we're, you know, beating as many doors down as we can to see if that's true or not. We keep being told, no, it's not, no, it's not. So, yeah, it's 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 something we'll be ready to activate on, and, you know, we have our phone-to-action campaign. I think that you folks all get those emails, so that'll probably be the first step is, you know, immediately get that going. So, yeah, we're we're ready, and it's, you know, so far, you know, there's been a few senators in the Senate that have held strong on no votes on it, and we continue to talk to them to make sure that they're going to be there when we need them, so.
Well, let us know if we can help with that, apps. All right. If nothing else, thank you for being here this evening. We appreciate your presentation and all the work that MAC does, and particularly your new president. We particularly appreciate his work, too.
Thank you.
All right. Our next special item is the 2023 Budget Public Hearing, so I'm going to go ahead and declare the public meeting on the 2023 budget to be open. If anyone wishes to address the board with respect to our 2023 budget, you may do so by identifying yourself. You have up to three minutes to comment.
I think typically we do this first and then ask for comments.
Oh, ask for comments afterwards. All right. You go ahead, then.
All right. So let me run through this, and then we will have it ready to go. I just need to get the screen. Increase the screen. Okay, there we go. Got it. Okay, I am very pleased tonight to be able to present the fiscal year 2023 Kent County budget to you. Obviously, this process is a long one. It takes over six months to complete. It involves dozens of county staff and elected officials and commissioners, and it's an all-hands-on-deck type of thing, and even though we've had some special challenges, partly due, I think, to the aftermath of the pandemic and supply chain issues and inflation, you know, I'm very pleased to be able to tell you that the budget that I'll be presenting is balanced and has taken all those factors into consideration, and I think it will be a solid spending plan. Remember, for nine months next year, because next year on 10-1 of 2023, we transitioned to a fiscal year September 30 or October 1, whoever you want to say that fiscal year. So this is a nine-month budget that actually gets us to that point, and then all county funds will be on that same 10-1 fiscal year. So I just wanted to do a quick run-through on what the process has been to date. So on May 31, budget guidelines were approved, and then the CIP plan was approved on August 16. The majority of the 10-1 budgets, so part of the reason to go to the new fiscal year is that in a way, we do two separate budget process preparations in fiscal and then a couple different audit ones as well. So it really helps us be more concise, and I think it's also more transparent to the public.[1730.33] The proposed budget was presented on October 4 and on October 18, and the Finance and Physical Resources Committee acted on the proposed budget on November 1. And state statute does require that a public hearing be held on the budget prior to its passage, which is scheduled for your November 17 meeting. So the purpose of this meeting is to provide a forum for the public to review and comment on the proposed budget. The 2023 budget exemplifies the county's mission and was developed with the Board's strategic priorities in mind, so economic prosperity, high quality of life, service delivery excellence, inclusive participation, and effective communication. Through responsible budgeting and thoughtful planning, Kent County Government is committed to providing resources and services that promote a high quality of life for the entire community. For 2023, total revenues excluding inter-fund transfers are $408.1 million. $186.7 million, which is 45.7% of all revenue, comes from taxes. $173.6 million, which is, of which is from current property tax collections, the county's largest revenue source. Taking a look at expenditures, the all-funds expenditures budget excluding inter-fund transfers is $385.2 million, 61.9%, of which is invested in judicial, public safety, and social services. The total budget includes $164.2 million for the general fund budget and $1,892.6 full-time equivalent positions. $82.9 million of the proposed budget is invested in public safety services that preserves and protects the safety and security of county residents, provides criminal and civil enforcement, maintains a communication center to facilitate emergency call answering, provides a safe and secure correctional facility, humane sheltering for stray animals, and to assist in the acquisition of fire trucks, maintenance, and insurance for participating local units of government. $49.9 million of the proposed budget is invested in judicial services to administer justice according to existing laws and operates in an efficient and effective manner. Here's civil, criminal, appeals, probate, and traffic cases. Handles decedent estates, guardianships, conservatorships, mental health and trust matters. Seeks justice for all victims of crime and children in need, and investigates and makes recommendations regarding child custody, parenting time, child support, and child medical $105.7 million of the proposed budget is invested in social services to promote self-reliance and also safeguards the physical, emotional, and social well-being of county residents by influencing policies, providing education programs and services, and responding to the needs of vulnerable populations. $76.4 million of the proposed budget is allocated to general government and debt to plan, provide, and manage efficient, reliable, and innovative services to county clients so that they may effectively fulfill their mission to the public and to meet all debt $20.8 million of the proposed budget is invested in cultural activities to enhance the quality of life in Kent County by providing recreation space for citizens to gather for public and private events. This includes weddings, company picnics, family reunions, nonprofit fundraisers, golf, an outstanding trail system for hiking, biking, walking, and running, and a wide range of other special events that bring our community together. $3.6 million of the proposed budget is allocated to community and economic development to work in partnership with local agencies to develop greater economic opportunities, promote tourism, community development, provide convention facilities, and improve the quality of life for all county residents. $45.8 million of the proposed budget is allocated to public works to provide stormwater drainage, solid waste, and recycling services to county residents. This function helps to conserve natural resources and promotes a healthy, vibrant, and sustainable In summary, the budget continues the county's commitment to a high quality of life for its residents. The budget supports the economic prosperity of the county, and it adheres to sound fiscal management and board policies. The budget invests in services to improve efficiency and to provide service delivery excellence to the residents of Kent County. The budget is balanced with a positive margin due to a shortened fiscal year. What's next? After today's public hearing on the budget, the Board will be asked to act on the budget at its meeting on Thursday, November 17 at 8:30 a.m. The proposed budget is available to view online at accesskent.com. I thank the Board for all your hard work and the due diligence that has been put into the review of this budget. I also thank all the Department Directors for their hard work developing the budget, the budget review teams for their time and due diligence, Fiscal Services staff, especially tonight. I want to recognize Jeff Dode and Marvin Van Nordwick, who lived this for a good part of the year, actually, the whole year, and rest of Fiscal Services, too. There's a lot of contributors into this process. And now, Mr. Chair, I turn it over to you to moderate the public hearing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Al, for the presentation and reviewing that for us. Now, we will open it up to the public. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to address us with respect to this proposed budget, you may do so now. Please identify yourself by name and where you live, and you have up to three minutes. Good afternoon, evening.
How you doing, everybody? My name is DeAndre Jones. I stay at 967 Temerack Avenue, northwest Grand Rapids, Michigan. I like the budget, but what does economic prosperity look like to Kent County? We're right behind the largest city of African Americans, Detroit, Michigan, in the United States. That's the largest population of African Americans. And then we have here the city of GR, which is the second-tier city for economic development for African Americans. As I've said, again, we have 11,000 businesses that make $250,000 in revenue. Only 70 of those businesses are ran by people of color. Just recently, and I like that we got care of violence here, but we need care of poverty. It's a serious poverty problem here. My grandfather just recently passed away September 29, and my mom was, you know, my mom receives Social Security still to this day, and I just hate the standards that I grew up in. I got dreams and aspirations and things that I want to accomplish, not just for my family to take them out of poverty, because that's where I grew up in my whole entire life, but just my neighborhood, my communities, Kent County itself. Just recently, I was at, I was at the bar on Friday, and then I went to the after-hours, you know, when you're young, when the party is over and everything else, you look for the next fun thing, and I wish it wasn't always violence, and though people could actually do those things and go home peacefully without the police getting involved, but I just witnessed another shooting. And it's people willing to pay $40 to get into a hot warehouse with a bunch of people and go crazy and turn up and maybe smoke a couple woods, and that's, you know, cannabis, that's a different thing, but it's people willing to, you know, buy bottles and go chill in those settings, and sometimes I just wish that we can do those things peacefully without people shooting things up. And so when people have good ideas, regardless of ethnicity, I hope that the county consider those ideas, because if people are willing to pay $40 to get into a hot warehouse and see girls twerking and smoke a couple blunts and drink, I believe that they'll pay for something that can educate them, but they just need the opportunity and know that opportunity exists. And so, like I said, I'm always out there in the hood. I'm willing to go into any neighborhood with any one of you commissioners and talk to people and really try to come to, come to peace with people, just because I'm really tired of not being able to go places and people are shooting. I've seen so many shooters, like when people are shooting, I just look around and make sure they're not shooting at me, because I've seen so many shooters. I don't jump, I don't scream when I hear gunshots, and so I'm just speaking as a kid that grew up in poverty my whole life and just, you know, my mom is still receiving those Social Security checks, and one day I hope I can buy my mom a house. One day I hope I can take care of my county. One day I really hope that I can change the economy of this city and my county. Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, DeAndre. I see no other attempts to comment, so I will call on Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I move that we close the Budget Public Hearing.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Vice Chair Breevy. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Very good. The hearing is closed. All right. Ironically, we now move to public comment. If anyone from the public wishes to address this Board with respect to agenda items, this is only agenda items, items that are on our current agenda, you may do so now, and you have up to three minutes if you identify yourself and your address.
Chair, could I ask for a point of order real quick?
A point of order is allowed.
Thank you. I just wondered, did Commissioners have an opportunity to comment as well on the...
No.
Okay.
You'll have plenty of opportunity, but not in the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I do not see anyone wishing to address us in this public comment, so we'll move to item number seven, Consent Agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I motion to move the consent agenda for today's date.
Supported by Commissioner Antor.
Coleman.
Coleman. You're pretty close there. All right. Any conversation, questions, comments? If not, that is a roll call, so Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Woodin.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Honstein. Morgan. McLeod. LeGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Bulkowski. Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Bolter. Antor.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 14 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you very much. I now move to Resolutions, item eight, and call on Commissioner Burl.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move Resolution 115 of today's date, brought to you by the Circuit Court.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Womack. Comments, questions with respect to this motion? I see none. It is also a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 115, Commissioners Woodin.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Honstein. Morgan. McLeod. LeGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Bulkowski. Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Bolter. Antor.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 14 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 115 is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to our next item, which is public comment. Pretty popular tonight. If anyone from the public wishes to address the Board, you may do so at this time. This time it is with respect to any matter within our jurisdiction. Again, if you'll identify yourself by name. You haven't moved since the last time, so you're okay. Otherwise, you have up to three minutes.
How you doing, everybody? My name is DeAndre Jones. When I woke up today, I remember I went to Dubai, and a lot of, every time I saw the people in the community, they'd be like, "You went to Dubai? That's like on my bucket list." And I'm just like, I really went there for a business meeting. I wasn't trying to sightsee because I'm a visionary, and I don't really want to go fly places if I can't make money there, to be honest. Like, what's the point of going there if you can't make some money and then really enjoy it? At least that's the way I see it. But today I had got a message from a guy on WhatsApp, and he was telling me, like, you know, we still have properties in Dubai. Like, even though I couldn't afford them, I wanted to keep in contact with those people just to keep me just humble and hungry and just wanting more for myself. And so I'm just glad I really got to take that trip, because today I received another invite to, like, buy property, and they got a whole bunch of properties, and it's beautiful and stuff like that. But I really want to be able to inspire my community just with beautiful things, just to, like, the luxuries of life. Like, I really come from poverty. Like, I really come from, you know, powdered milk. I remember having a used powdered milk and mixed that with water to eat my cereal, because my mom couldn't afford milk. Like, I remember those government boxes with the white and black that used to come in the cereal. I really used to eat that cereal and the cornflakes. Like, who remembers government cornflakes? Like, I remember I really used to have to eat those things. And so, like, I'm just really glad I grew into the strong man I've become to tell my story, because there's a lot of young men that are growing up just like me. I'm 28 years old, but I know it's a 13-year-old kid that's probably arguing with his mom because he wants some nice kicks and he wants to look nice at school, but his mom is receiving Social Security, and when you got a job and you got Social Security, even if you get Social Security, they don't let you allow you a job, and if they do, it's not too much and all. Inflation is serious, and people can't afford cars, people can't afford groceries, people can't even afford their light bills. It's a lot of, and so I just really hope that Kent County, as I speak, but other young people speak to you, that you actually listen to their stories, because I was that kid. I was that kid in the juvenile detention. I was that kid that grew up on government assistance and still have family that still go through those same things, and I know I'm the only person. If I don't work hard to get my family out the struggle, I don't know who is going to get my family out the struggle. I don't know who is going to buy my mom a house. I don't know who is going to buy my mom a car and make sure that she never has to worry about those bills. I want to create those opportunities for other people in my community. I want the best resources and the best of, best of everything, regardless if it was a constituent, if it was somebody that I employ, if it was just anybody. I just want the best of the best for everything, because I know it is how it is to be at the absolute bottom and have the worst of the worst and still wish the best for everybody. And so I just really hope that you guys consider the ideas of young people of color, of just people of color with the ARPA funds. I really hope you guys consider those. Thank you.
Thank you, DeAndre. You know, I'm a lawyer, but I am in awe at what you were able to get into three minutes. All right. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Keith Morgan. I'm with the Wyoming Kidwood Area Chamber of Commerce. I do live, I am a Kent County resident, so 2049 Melvin Street in Wyoming. And I just wanted to introduce myself. When we talk about economic development and how do we further our communities, one of the things that we do at the chamber is work with our local businesses. There's a number of you that we work with through government matters and as well as businesses, and our desire as well, as the young men right here, is to help impact our communities. So our mission at the chamber is to build better communities by building better businesses. However you want to put that, the biggest piece is how do we work together to build those better businesses so we can affect our communities? I just want to say thank you for your time, and I wanted to introduce myself, Keith Morgan, your President and CEO for the Wyoming Kidwood Chamber.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Boone. I live at 2205 Knoll Point Drive in Ada, and I am here tonight to introduce you to myself as a candidate for the Kent District Library Board. I just wanted to put a face with my name if I haven't met any of you, and I'm a lifelong resident of Kent County. I have no plans to be anywhere else but here, and as a former public schools educator who stays very involved in the education world today and a mother of six, I feel that I come to the table with a great deal of experience within our public libraries, and everything from book reports to research and enjoying some of the community activity days and field trips, so kind of just across the gamut there. And I have experience in bookkeeping and budgets as well, as I currently work in that capacity for my husband's two dental practices in Kent County. I would love nothing more than to be a part of a team that maintains our public libraries and assures public access to books and information and activities that can benefit all of the people of Kent County. And if I'm offered an interview and recommended to the Board for your consideration, I sure hope you'll consider me as an asset to the KDL Board and to the betterment of Kent County and all we have to offer here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello. My name is Hal Mulholland Jr. I'm not as sophisticated as everybody else here. I don't have a laptop. I jotted some notes, and I wish I was...
You got one right in front of you there.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't think that'll work. I was born and raised in East Grand Rapids. My daughter was born and raised in East Grand Rapids. I graduated in '73. My graduate, my daughter graduated in 2010. I also have a mother-in-law who was one of the first graduates of East Grand Rapids, and I'm actually here on behalf of neighbors and people who are concerned with Mr. Skaggs and some of his behavior and some of the things that have... and some of his behavior and some of the things that have come to the forefront. I don't have details, but I've got enough information where I feel that, that he has been a little bit of an embarrassment to people in East Grand Rapids and his behavior and transgressions, as I, as I mentioned. But I'm talking about people who are Republicans, Democrats, independents, women who are, who follow the Me Too movement, and I've just said that I would speak on their behalf and to let the board know that there are people out there that are concerned about his behavior. I know that I've watched other meetings, didn't show up for one, and chastise for not, not showing up. But I just wanted to let people know that people of East Grand Rapids, especially a lot of us who've been around for a number of years, are concerned with his behavior and the way we understand he has treated other people. I find it concerning and wanted to express my concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I don't see anyone else, so we will move on to our next item, which is the administrator's report.
Yeah, I'll be brief. We had a very robust discussion at the informational meeting, the first of three we've had so far regarding what an affordable housing revolving loan fund could look like. And then, we also have some informational sessions scheduled on the proposed Kent County insurance authority, so just encouraging everyone, if at all possible, to make those part of your schedule. That's all for tonight.
Short and sweet. Reports, any reports? Yes. Vice Chair Breevy.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I have a report from the Board of Public Works. We had our meeting this morning, and it was more of a work session where we heard more about the plan for the, a new facility at the North Kent Transfer Station. As you all know, that area of our county, Northern Kent County, has really blossomed over the last several years, and that facility has been used and used and almost used up. So, it's been a great asset, and we are working on the final plans and getting some bids, and we should have a plan before us in December on the Board of Public Works to vote on. And it appears that it'll be about a $16 million cost to build this facility, and it'll be on the same property where the current facility is, and that property will stay, you know, in use during the time period that it's being built, and will repurpose that, the current facility as well. So, this is money that we will not need to bond for. This is money that the board and the department have been saving up the last several years. So, that's good news, so some good fiscal responsibility right there. But if you have any questions, let me know, but we will work through that plan in the next month or so. Thanks. That's all I got.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Burl.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just like to welcome Keith Morgan to our meeting today. So, Keith, you've been at the Wyoming Kentwood Chamber a couple, what's, what's the timeline now?
It is current?
Yes. One year. So, Keith's been in charge now for a year, does a great job at the Wyoming Kentwood Chamber. Every month, we have a government matters meeting. Commissioner Sparks and I attend those regularly. They take turns between Wyoming and Kentwood City Hall having those meetings, so those are on WKTV. We have various government officials that represent the Wyoming and Kentwood area there, including Superintendent at Kentwood Schools is, is there all the time. So, great discussion about government, very civil. We discuss a lot of things, and it's very beneficial. So, again, just like to thank Keith, like to thank all he does for the Wyoming Kentwood Chamber and our government matters meetings monthly. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Chair. KCCA Governing Board met last week, and I discussed a number of items, but the first big news was that we have identified a new director for KCCA, and hence, my quick retreat behind the desk, because I wanted to confirm if we can publicly announce the name, and it sounds, Gustavos Perez will be serving as the executive director for KCCA. He comes to us from the heart of West Michigan United Way, where he oversees resource management, 201 operations, their tax program, their assistance program departments. He also oversaw the CERA program, which was a tremendous success in our community. Definitely someone who brings the experience related to case management, which has been a struggle in that department, and having that value add is definitely something I know I'm excited about. Additionally, other topics that were discussed were, the county is, will be, and we'll coming back to the board, we will be determining how to use what are called the Home ARP Funds. We're an annual recipient of Home Investment Partnership, but as a result of the American Rescue Plan, there were funds put specifically for, through that, additional funds. They do have a greater number of restrictions. KCCA has been working on the best way to meet those requirements, and that'll be coming to us at the end of the year, I believe. Additionally, there were some community development block grant funds made available through the CARES Act that we are determining the best way to spend those by the final deadline. And some topics that were discussed were either some of our parks initiatives, as well as potentially other projects that have been talked about in the ARPA process or otherwise. So, keep posted on those. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I want to thank DeAndre Jones for his comments today, and just say, I'm very aware, as he stated, of the need of funding for programs within the city of Grand Rapids, and I would say just Kent County in general, because the violence, one day it's Kentwood, the next day it's Wyoming, and there's a shooting in Walker, then it's back to Grand Rapids. And just also want to say with my studying of the annual budget for the last six years, that a lot of times, when you see things like, we're sending this funding to public safety, we're sending this money to mental health, that a lot of that money does trickle down into the communities. We have just great African-American organizations like GRHI, that's been supported through our Kent County Health Department, Black Impact Collaborative, especially during the CARES Act. Just so many, like I said, GRHI, when we talk about mental health, family outreach, there's a lot of the different agencies that have partnerships. So, it's just great to be able to look at the whole budget and being a commissioner from that district, you know, being able to get with some of the younger people in the community and help put them with some of the resources that are coming. But it's very well needed to voice, DeAndre, to let you know just the need and passion. When I see you, I see myself six, seven, eight years ago. But that also brings me to just the courage of the guy who came out from East Grand Rapids, because it sounds like two different worlds, and I've had a chance to see both. And just seeing the guy from East Grand Rapids to come out and talk about some of the things that's happening at the county, it gives me hope, because sometimes, when your representatives tell an African-American male, you know, your career is done, you'll never win another local election. And an African-American male, as myself, looking back to where I started in DeAndre Jones' shoes, and even at a point when I thought life was hopeless, when I didn't know the county budget and the things that are coming to our community, and being able to get here and be able to take that back to the community. But just knowing now, as I go back to the community, I can say, yes, I stood in the face of racism. I've stood in front of a Phil Skaggs that brags about his help other destruction of Robert Dean, Pat Miles, Wayman Britt, to tell me I'll be next on the list. To sit among men like that, people that sleep with staff members, people that have conflict of interest, and to see African-American males like Wayman Britt be ridiculed, be pressured, and not even finish two years as a county administrator, and it to be bragged about. I can say this, there's a lot of African-American males that have been destroyed. But I'm, when I hear DeAndre Jones and I look at where I started, I can say one thing, I'm not going to give up, I'm not going to quit, I'm not going to let anybody define my future, except God. Next year will be the first time that we don't have an African-American male or African-American representing our district for over 30 years. Luckily, we do have somebody that is very known with us that will be representing us, hopefully, because I'm going to be supporting Tony Baker. But just this, our ecosystem, our ecosystem has been erupted, and we're going to continue to fight, because when you destroy one African-American male, I remember growing up watching only the African-American males that we thought were sellouts were accepted in Kent County. So, we would rather keep our manhood by running the streets, myself going in and out of jail. We looked at that as it was better than to have to sell out and bow down to how white people support us as African-American males. So, I just want to tell the guy from East Grand Rapids, thanks for coming out to represent your community, because a lot of times, we meet your representatives, it makes us get stereotypes of East Grand Rapids, that anything is allowed, that people have no morals, that people don't respect marriage, that people don't respect lines of conflict. So, I'm just going to say, I've been very moved by your statements and DeAndre Jones, and we're going to continue to be positive in our community, but we're going to continue to fight as African-American males to be accepted for who we are. We may make a few mistakes along the way, but, you know, I just want to say, as I finish out, DeAndre and to all of the members of my community, I met some good people in Kent County, I met some crazy people, I met some real heroes, and I can tell you, there's more real heroes up here as commissioners. And if I have to speak for Kent County in my six years, I'm very satisfied that they have did everything, they've been over backwards, they've always had an ear to the situations in Grand Rapids, even though they represent 22 townships, villages, so sometime, our community don't understand that they just Grand Rapids, and they don't get a lot of credit for the money they do send through Grand Rapids and through a lot of programs. But, DeAndre, I am a commissioner that is always open to sit down with you and, and let's continue to get a better understanding of what's going on, where those monies are, and help you get to where you can buy a house for your mom in Dubai.
So, I'm going to suggest we kind of morphed into miscellaneous. So, any other miscellaneous? None? All right. So, just one reminder for folks, the staff team working on the ARPA process has been hard at work daily, I can attest, and so, we continue to have that process refined and focused. Remind you that there is a session coming up on the 14th. I think it was identified as a special, but it's going to be a work session. It's a evening session starting at 5:30. So, it is, it's an evening session, but the intention is we're going to work through the staff's recommendation for the, for the funding allocation at that point and, and try to identify as much as we can about that, pick out the questions, and if things move along, we may be able to put this up for a vote at the next meeting on November 17. So, we're not over the finish line yet with this, a lot of work to do, but stay tuned. With that, I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move for the adjournment of today's meeting, subject to the call.
Unanimously supported. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.